I like to call this meeting order. Tunnel five. Eric, would you start us with the pledge?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the physical liberty and justice for all.
You're welcome. Okay, special meeting. The sheet says February 20th, 2023. It's really March 20th, 2023. And it's tunnel six AM. Clerk roll call, please. Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Wolfson.
Ostrigan.
Censor. Here. I'm present.
Prove off the agenda.
I'm the chair.
I'll second it.
I'd like to interject here. I am here via Zoom.
Okay.
Could you please acknowledge that Eric Ostrigan is here via Zoom?
You're, you'll be listed in, on the attendance sheet that we keep in my office of participants that participate online via Zoom. And as you're aware, I'm sure that, you know, you cannot vote or anything, but you could speak during public comment.
I understand. Thank you.
Number five, public comment.
You have to vote on the approval of the agenda.
I'm sorry. I thought we didn't. Call roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Censor. Yes. Wolfson. Russo.
Yes. Public comment.
Yes, I have some public comment.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I object to the, uh, this meeting being held in the first place, uh, held during, uh, a time when, uh, you knew I was going to be out of town. Uh, and also, uh, you emphasized to me the fact several times that you would hold off on having booked on certain things when, for example, when Darlene could not make the last meeting. So it seems that you're picking and choosing when you can have meetings. I really don't understand the purpose of this meeting, why it couldn't wait for two days and the business to be covered two days from now in our regular meeting. Uh, so I object to this, this meeting, uh, in the first place. I, I, I think there's something nefarious going on, but I'll guess I'll find out. Thank you.
Yes, and the meeting was already scheduled when you let me know that you were out of town, Eric. I didn't have no idea you were gone.
Yeah, David, you, yeah, but I, I don't announce where I, I rearranged my schedule.
And that's fine. You don't need to. I just let you know.
Okay. Well, I let, I let you know immediately when you, uh, asked for this, for the special meeting. Uh, if you could explain what the urgency is on why this, whatever business you're going to be taking care of, why it couldn't wait for two days? That's, that's my question.
More time to do it now than on Tuesday. And besides that, the county building doesn't open to eight thirty, Eric.
Well, there, the, do we have a limitation on the amount of time that is in our regular meetings, David? No, we do not. If we had to be there from ten o'clock till four o'clock in the afternoon to spend whatever amount of time you're doing right now is not really that, that much of an additional amount of time. I, I, I just fail to understand the reason why you had to hold a special meeting for whatever you're going to be doing.
Mr. Chair. This is, this is outside of the.
Yes, it is. Let's move on. Is there any other public comment? New business recap board rules in meeting. I called this meeting because I just wanted to go through the basics. We're getting some areas, we're getting off into different areas and stuff like that in our meetings. So I just wanted to explain to everybody how it goes. We come in on a Thursday prior to the meeting at nine o'clock in the morning. And it's the vice chair, myself, Jody and Julie and the clerk or her office. And we put together our work session. Then we go through the motions, resolutions and all that kind of stuff. Once that's done, it's hard to add anything on. You know, it's just not good practice, good business. In our work session, when somebody wants to put an item on there, normally we give them like fifteen minutes. You know, on the work session. Uh, for an instance, Vanessa came to me and she said, I have one that's coming in. It's going to take sixty minutes. At that time, when we're putting everything together, we know how many to put on for the work session. Or if we need to change it, you know, if it's going to take, you know, an hour for one topic, I won't schedule nothing else for that particular meeting. No, we'll focus on that. But, you know, one hour in the last twelve years has been sufficient. You know, allowing fifteen minutes, someone could come across in fifteen minutes. Then we put the agenda together. And that's the part, you know, we're, we're getting off and we're changing or adding. And that can't be, once the clerk pulses everything, we need to stick with that agenda. And if you have any questions as I'm going on.
Just listening right now, Mr. Chair.
Please jump in. Motions and resolutions. There again, everyone gets packeted. The clerk advertises the motions and resolutions. We can't, the day of the meeting be adding or the day before motions. Because we're not getting the public. It's like we're cheating the public, you know, like they, they could look at it on a Sunday night. Then all of a sudden Monday, if we add motions or Tuesday, they just feel that we're just sneaking it in there. And I don't like doing that. So, you know, when we get our packet on Fridays afternoons, I believe, at that point, I like to stay right with that packet unless there is an emergency. And every now and then something will pop up or emergency where we could explain it. But we need to really stick with that packet. Yes, thank you. And as Julie just said, everything's loaded on the website. Emails. If I'm emailing Jody, I don't need to include all the commissioners with that email. I'm asking Jody a question where I don't need to email everyone, all the commissioners for if I have a question. And I would like to get away from that. If I want to email Rex, I don't need to email all the commissioners. I'm sending him an email. Or Andy or, you know, if it was for all the commissioners, you know, I would address them all. But if I have a question for a topic for Jody, I don't need to send happy everyone in that email.
Well, if I could expand on that, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I've gotten a voluminous amount of emails from Commissioner Ostrigan, which I appreciate the fact that he's emailing me. But I don't need emails at eleven o'clock or late at night or early in the morning, especially on weekends. I think it speaks of kind of a, wouldn't use the word necessarily harassment, but the bottom line is I don't need to be notified on a weekend. Uh, I believe we need to be respectful of each other during our meetings. We don't have any outbursts toward the public and we need to make sure all questions go through the chair.
Thank you. But do you have anything, Darlene?
I don't at this time.
Okay, Rex, anything? Okay, yes.
Um, I don't know if our board rules address it or not. But my understanding of a Zoom meeting and a board member attending my Zoom is they can participate in all discussions. They're not allowed to vote. I don't know if that's correct or not.
That is actually not correct. It used to be correct. COVID came, they changed those rules um, in order to allow for all participation when they redid to pull out the COVID rules. Um, our representatives at the state level pulled out all electronic participation. So you can't participate at all, except as a member of the public. So they, they did us a disservice. That is something that, uh, the Michigan Association of Counties is working on. I don't know why they did it.
Okay. Emails, motions. Or something else. Even though we agree or disagree, you know, I could agree with Michelle or disagree with Michelle, you know, and I'm not focusing on you, Michelle. I'm just okay. Or Tim out there or anybody. We need to stay positive afterwards, you know, when we leave this room. Uh, just don't take it out on other commissioners, you know, because I said something. Or Rex, if you tell me something, you know, and I disagree with you, you know, I've known you for years. And you know how I operate, but we still need to agree and move on to our next meeting. Darlene, you know, we're we're, everyone needs to get along.
Um, that brings to mind like when there's a public comment, it's a time for the public to make a comment to the board. It is not time to engage into an argument with.
And I'll reinforce that, Mr. Chair. Is, it, that's exactly true. It's not a time for us to oh, it's not a time for us to have a dissertation. It's time to respectfully listen and learn from what the public has to provide to us. An opportunity for us to learn and make better, be a better decision maker.
You know, we were elected and we all have to listen to our people out there. And, you know, there's times where we're not going to agree with somebody, or I might disagree, but you guys might agree, but we just have to move on afterwards. We can't hold nothing back. Uh, you just know what I'm trying to say, I guess. You know, uh, the building opens at eight thirty, you know, it's only been fifteen, twenty minutes. But by the time the people would come in here, you'd have to call the meeting at eight forty-five. Our work session starts at nine, and if we had lengthy discussions, we wouldn't be able to move into our next meeting. A lot of people, they plan, okay, nine o'clock, I gotta be at the county. You know, a visitor or whatever, and I gotta leave work for two hours because I see their other meeting doesn't start to ten, an hour for that, then I could be back to work at eleven thirty. And we do have a lot of people that come in and they, you know, they're accustomed to that. You know, if we have a really big topic, you know, sure, it might take an hour or two. But for the work session, there again, I just want to keep it like the way we've been doing it over the years and it's always worked out perfect. Resolutions. This is a big thing. I can't come in and say I want a resolution to this and just dump it on the board. If you want to come up with a resolution, you should create that resolution and bring it to the board. It's, and I'm not picking on you. I'm just talking in general. Or if Jody wants a resolution, it's not up to us to create it. I'm not picking on you, Jody. Uh, or.
Well, if you wanted a resolution, I would think that you should be responsible for writing that and maybe then the board can help tweak it.
We could tweak it, but it's not our job to write the resolution. You know, if you need help writing it, you know, Michelle might be able to help you write it, you know, to add words or whatever.
Unless it's a board decision to come up with a resolution.
At that point, yes. And then it's going to take all of us to write that resolution. We can't just dump it on Julie or Andy or Jody or Michelle, you know.
You can't dump it on anyone.
Jody, would you explain to us Julie's position and her job duties, please?
Didn't know I was going to be doing this today.
You didn't either.
Yes, I can. So Julie Nordquist is your, our official administration office secretary. She reports on a day-to-day basis to myself for her overall duties as far as being responsive to requests from the chair and the vice chair um, in regards to the board packets and board correspondences. She then oversees all of the air traffic control for our offices. Um, she babysits me. She takes care of all of the accounts payable, payroll um, and assists the clerk's office in other matters that may go with the board as needed as well.
Michelle, would you care to tell us what the clerk's duties are at these meetings, please?
So the clerk's office is the clerk to the Board of Commissioners and that entails many different things. So because this board does have a board secretary, she is one who prepares the agenda. Meaning when, when I say prepares, that means she types it up. She's under the direction of the chair and the vice chair. By no means should a commissioner email the board secretary and say, I sent this to you. I want it added right now. Those motions go through the board chair and those, as per the board rules, there is any information for the upcoming meeting needs to be to the board secretary by four PM on Wednesday. And there's a reason for that because there has to be time to prepare the agenda for the agenda meeting, which occurs on Thursday morning. Um, sometimes that gets moved around and then that allows time. We have that meeting. We review everything that's been presented to that point. And then we have to have time to prepare the packet and that includes how many of our correspondence. And lately, it seems like there's been a numerous amount of resolutions forwarded from various counties regarding various things that, um, are directed, the clerk's office is directed to send them to the next county or to all the counties so that every, the other eighty-two counties in the state know what's going on. And so we have this policy that we have everything posted by four PM on Friday. So not only when the board secretary is trying to do that, and I know I'm kind of going off of more folks on that her role in assisting my office with this process for you is to have that stuff by four PM is one, we have to have it on there for, um, everybody to view, ample time to view it, for you to get it so that you, the Board of Commissioners, can actually review the topics that you're going to be discussing and direct of, um, addressing at the meeting on Wednesday and do your own research and educate yourself on these items. So especially for the work session, the work session is for discussing things and bringing things to the attention of the board. And you want to have that time and then you allow yourself two weeks after that. So we're not just throwing things in there randomly at any given time. As you said, it's to allow the public time to prepare, read the agenda. They know if they need to make time to attend this meeting or not and whether they can address their issues. Um, we have to post the meetings. We have those posted and we have to have an agenda. So we have to have that agenda prepared in a timely manner. So for example, with this special meeting today, we got the notice done and we have to get the agenda prepared. There's not a lot of time. She's got a lot of other things. I mean, she's also doing the accounts payable. She's claims and accounts.
Let's face it, babysitting means it's a full job.
That's it. And then sorting through emails. Um, and we also, the clerk's office is also responsible for the minutes of the meeting. So having some clear organization to what we're doing and what we're going through in the meeting is helpful. Yes, I understand things can be brought up at various times. Things can be added to the agenda. And that is fine. We, we get that. We understand that. However, it needs to be done respectfully and it needs to be done with consideration to the topic, the manner in which it's being addressed. I pretty much went all over the place and not really seeing much of what you want, but, uh, you know, and apparently according to this, I'm kept keeping you in line. So, um, you know, and keeping in mind also, I would ask that, you know, I will be rotating with my staff because we need to make sure we have enough people in my office capable of coming into these meetings and clerking this meeting and not having random things just thrown at them that, uh, with all due respect, wouldn't be thrown at me. So some of the things that if I were sitting in this chair, so if someone from my office is sitting in this chair, it's not any different than if I'm sitting in here. So for people to say, well, you need to do this and you need to do that. Because if you're not going to say that to my face, then please don't say that to my staff. If I touch on what you want.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And like I said, the scope of this meeting today is just to go through all this stuff. Another thing is if I make a decision to do something as chair and being new at this, you know, I might make you upset or it might make you upset. But I am not going to put up with someone swearing at me or calling me names or saying I don't have balls or I, I'm just not going to do it. I'll hang up on you from now on. If we're on the phone or if I'm with you in person, I'm just going to walk away. It's a way to talk to people. I don't expect to be treated like that. Rex, I know you long enough, Darlene. I know you, Mark. We need to respect each other's space. Yes, sir.
Glad you touched base on that, Mr. Chair. I just was writing some copious notes and it would be remiss if I didn't bring this up. Never, never, never should be allowed or permitted to label, for a commissioner to label a group or organization stupid. This is inflammatory, impulsive, offensive, callous and discriminatory in nature. It should never, never, never be permitted. I can't say that strongly enough, Mr. Chair.
Darlene, do you have anything?
I would have to agree with what Mark just said because that's we have to respect everybody.
Mm-hmm. You know, even though we, there's going to be times where we're going to disagree in a motion or something, we still have to respect our coworkers. I don't care if you're black, blue, yellow, pink. Everyone's human. And you know what? Everyone makes mistakes. I make mistakes all the time and I'll admit to it. I learned, you know, I've been here for ten years, twelve years as a commissioner and I'm still learning. I don't know everything. And, you know, like at the station, I've been on the department for forty years. And my biggest thing I tell the guys is everyone's in a learning process. If I have any of you guys out there that feel you know everything, you don't belong in my house. You need to move on to a different station. Because every fire you learn, every meeting, we have meetings for us to learn. I've been in the business for forty years. I'm still learning. And I don't care if you're a commissioner for fifty years. If you're not learning, then you don't need to be in that room. You need to retire. You need to be respectful. Anything, Rex. Julie, do you have anything since you deal with us all the time? Okay.
One last thing, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I kind of touched base on the emails. Never should a phone call or email be allowed earlier than eight thirty. And no emails or phone calls should be allowed after four thirty in, in respect to the folks that work for the county. You need your private time and that should be respected. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you. Uh, that's all I had to say. I know it only took twenty, twenty-five minutes, right? But I can move on. You are, do I need to do that on public comment? Okay.
Yes, I have, I have public comment.
I'm not to that yet.
Sorry, he's calling on me to participate in the discussion. So I've been doing some research and I came across this little ditty here and I'll go through it kind of quickly and I'll be happy to pass a copy on to all of you. It's a meeting protocol and rules of decorum. In support of and respect for open, fair and informed decision-making process, the Board of Commissioners recognized that, obviously, this is, this was actually from a board out in Wyoming. Civil, respectful and courteous discourse and behavior are conducive to the democratic and harmonious airing of concerns and decision-making. Uncivil discourse and/or discourteous and inappropriate behavior have a net of, a negative impact on the character and productivity of the decision-making process. In an effort to preserve the intent of open government and maintain a positive environment for citizen input and commission decision-making, the following meeting protocol and rules of decorum have been adopted. So this is just part of what they, how they handle public comment because this is something that has been bothering me during public comment sessions. And public comment is encouraged and it will continue to be listed. And again, this is from another board, but there are some things in here and I've gone back and forth. And I, I know that some of these are practices that we've had in the past, but they're for some reason not in the rules. Um, public comment is encouraged and will continue to be listed as an agenda item at every regular county commissioner's meeting. The public comment period will be held near the beginning of the meeting. This board allows for two. The chairman will open public comment by announcing the allotted time provided for the comment period and for individual speakers. Each individual wishing to be heard during the public comment period will be given up to three minutes. That's again from another board. We have five. Speaker names are called. That's not relevant to us. The public comment period, will that be used to air personal grievances, make political endorsements or for political campaign purposes nor discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings? Speakers shall address all comments to the commissioners as a whole and not to individual commissioners. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience shall not be allowed. The time is for receipt of public comment, not debate. The chairman or commissioners will not enter into a dialogue with citizens. Questions from the commissioners will be for clarification purposes only. Public comment will not be used as a time for problem solving or reacting to comments made, but rather for hearing the citizens for informational purposes only. That is the purpose of public comment. The Board of Commissioners may assign staff to provide information requested by a speaker during the public comment period. The Board of Commissioners may elect to defer public comment on specific issues that appear on the regular agenda until that specific item is addressed. Anger, rudeness, ridicule, obscene or profane language, impatience and lack of respect for others and personal attacks are not acceptable behavior. Demonstrations in support or opposition to a speaker or idea are not permitted in the commissioners' chambers. The chairman is responsible for maintaining order. Failure to abide by this required requirement may result in the forfeiture of the speaker's right to speak. That was just something that I pulled up this morning because I, after Chairman Russo called this meeting on Thursday and I went back and I was going back through the board rules. And there's been a lot of things that, uh, I actually intended to potentially speak during public comment at your regular meeting because I felt all of you need to be here to hear it. Um, but just a reminder that the, the purpose of the Board of Commissioners is to conduct the business of the county. And I don't feel a whole heck of a lot of business has been conducted this year. There's been too much time spent on I, I'm not even going to say what, what it, what it was. But it's been very disappointing. Um, in here for agendas, any commissioner or chairperson of a committee board or other commission of the county desiring to place a matter on the work session agenda shall notify the board of, the board chairperson of such item by four PM on the Wednesday of the week preceding the next regular meeting of the board. That means it's to the secretary by four PM on Wednesday. Or the chairman and the chairman's going to forward it to her. Four o'clock. We have the agenda meeting usually at nine o'clock in the morning. Sometimes it's a little bit earlier. Sometimes it's a little bit later, but by four o'clock and we close at four thirty. And there's often times that Julie is here late when she shouldn't be, she shouldn't need to be. And, you know, I understand and I appreciate and I know that she's probably already got much of the agenda set up and has to plug in a few things here and there. But to come at her with at various times, that's not okay. However, any board member may request to the chairperson an agenda item be added under unfinished new business prior to or during the regular meeting agenda approval process. This was something that you debated for some time before you actually approved your rules. So it's my understanding, and I believe it's Commissioner Ostrigan's understanding too, based on some of the stuff I was trying to do. But I think that there's some confusion of the board as a whole. My understanding, when you get to that point on the agenda where you're approving the agenda, that during that time, so you can have your motion to approve the agenda, second, the agenda, okay, well, then you have your discussion. If a commissioner has something they would like to add to the agenda, then is it at that time that you want them to bring that to you? Or do you want them to come to you prior to the meeting and say, Mr. Chair, I have this topic of discussion that I would like to bring? So, yeah, that, was that how you would like that handled? Okay, so address the chairperson ahead of time. You gotta give everybody some heads up. You can't. You can't get the agenda on Friday afternoon at four o'clock and want to add five different things. It's not going to work out that way. But then you have that discussion. So then, all right, do you, that's where I guess where I'm kind of getting a little bit, need some clarification. You want it after the motion in the second? Do you want it before? Because then when that person's making the motion, are they going to amend their motion to add this information if you're allowing that information to be added? It should be before because then you're adding, you're making a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of. So rather than a friendly amendment, which isn't always friendly.
With your permission, Mr. Chair, transparency is always the key. The public should be totally, completely aware of what's going to be discussed. Are there agenda items that will pop up from time to time? The answer is yes.
Absolutely.
Timely issues. But there should never be a time where the public calls me at home or calls the chairman or calls the clerk and says, I didn't know that was going to be discussed. Never, normally, I should say. And unfinished and new business, there shouldn't be agenda items that are, that are to be discussed. That haven't already been gone through the board chairman, he's cognizant or aware that those things are going to be transpired. So in my opinion, when I hear new and old business, I should know, there should be something on the agenda that says, this is what we're going to discuss. It shouldn't be a shocker to me that we're going to discuss some new topic. It should be fully conscious and aware to be able to discussion debate. The public should be aware that it's going to be discussed. Transparency is the key. The chairman has the ability of, if something comes up to be able to have a meeting next day where it's chairman's leisure. But we should never have a discussion in new and or unfinished business that I'm not cognizant or aware of. And the public is, is not aware of. The public should always be aware and always be aware of what we're going to discuss, always. Unless a timely issue occurs.
Well, and I, and I don't disagree with you that the public needs to be aware. And I think that that's where just all of the board needs to, to understand that if a new topic is introduced. It could be introduced, but there's not going to be immediate action on it.
Absolutely.
It's going to be something that, you know what? Yes, maybe we need to bring that to the next work session and have discussion on that. Or have some discussion and then we need to talk about it again at the next meeting.
Thank you for clarifying that. I, I appreciate that comment. The reason being is the public should be aware of it that time and not to be expected to be voted on or even given my opinion. Till I've had full, full time to be able to do my research, do my due diligence. It's always imperative each commissioner do their due diligence and their research before they make a decision. It would be wrong for us to willy-nilly come up with a decision based on comments that maybe are not substantiated or not factual. I always want to be informed, always, always want to be informed of what's going to be discussed. So I can make an informed decision, not only for me, but for, not for the district that I represent, but for the entire county residents of this county. They deserve that. They deserve that opportunity for the commissioners to make informed and informed decisions.
I agree. And I agree that it shouldn't be something that just pops up, absolutely. Because I've had times where we're in a meeting and all of a sudden, oh, hey, this is the, what, what? And you know, so not everybody is able to attend that meeting or they don't know about it until after the fact. So absolutely, I agree that the public needs to be informed and that's why you have these rules. That's why there's that four o'clock deadline on Wednesday. So we can have an agenda meeting on Thursday. So that agenda packet can be public, published to the public into you at four, by four o'clock on Friday. So you have that time to prepare.
Absolutely. And also, Mr. Chair, you know, the other day during the meeting, and probably get this wrong. When you mentioned you didn't like the stupid comment, Mr. Ostrigan. I remember correctly, Mr. Ostrigan made a comment, something like to the fact that I don't care if you like that or not. We don't do that. All comments are respectful to the chair and to each other. It's not permitted. It's not allowed. It should never be allowed for any commissioner to be disrespectful to any member of the board and or the public. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, another thing is the form of address. So board members wishing to speak shall first obtain the approval of the chairperson. And each person who speaks shall address the chairperson.
Always.
So that's something that needs to be remembered because there's often times where the conversation is being directed to something that someone from the audience has said. And that's not how this should be conducted. That's not how the meetings should be conducted. Um, just a reminder that each of the committees that you have. So is that it's the responsibility of the committees to make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. And the Board of Commissioners are the ones who make final decisions regarding the actions of the committees. Unless it's so otherwise been determined at some other time. I think that was all that I had. Yeah. That was all I had at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Bryce. So I will start off first by saying I will take some responsibility for some of the things that I am going to recap. In being that I do have three new board members and a branch new board chair. And a portion of my responsibilities is to advise and guide the Board of Commissioners. Clearly, our understanding of the purpose of a work session has gotten way askew from the generalized concept of that. The work session is where the business of the county comes forth to be reviewed and discussed, questioned by the Board of Commissioners. That way you have that whole two weeks to ask questions, do research and do follow-up. So that when meeting time comes in two weeks. You can make a timely decision on that. We all know in general, government doesn't move fast. But the further we get away from that, the longer some things will take for you. Additionally, with the work session. Each individual commissioner does have the right to request items to be placed on the work session. Perhaps that wasn't as clearly handled at the beginning. Um, but I think that you're coming into more of a groove with that. And just getting that information in on a timely purpose. Prior to the vice chair and the chairman reviewing the decisions for that. The other portion of that is there are some topics that can wait and there are some topics that are timely. The purpose of that work session, that hour, I've heard the comment, you know, oh, we could go. Commissioner Wolfson said, well, could we have a longer work session? Couple important things for you. The first important thing is. I don't know if anybody else has A D H D, but meetings at best for attention, an hour at length. If we're not organized, then that hour is going to, yes, turn into a millennial of things. But if we have a topic that is going to take forty-five minutes, let's book forty-five minutes. And if everything else can wait, then move it to your next work session. But let's, let's move it to the next work session. Let's be very clear about that. Um, Julie has the ability that we all can attach to between the clerk's office and our office to put those items on the calendar agendas throughout the entirety of the year. So I already have items two weeks out, four weeks out, um, as people have called in. The other side of that is that also gives us the point of if Commissioner Censor says, Jody, I'd like some more information on this. Can you contact so-and-so and get that for me? I have the ability to get that organization for you as well. Um, ideally, we'll be able to share all documents ahead of time for that work session. Then your work session obviously carries over into the next week's regular meeting. Um, anything that your, for instance, the juvenile detention. There was some more questions, some more information discussion that needed to be happened. So that's been added to new unfinished business. So that any information that could be obtained prior to that can be reviewed and discussed again before the motion that's on. So I apologize if that hasn't been explained or outlined. Um, I really am concerned with a couple section of your board rules. And this would be again, me doing my portion of advising you. As far as please make sure that you're following in line with the things that you are doing. Uh, Michelle touched on several of them. So I don't feel like that I have to do too many of the ones I've already done. Um, one of the big ones is disorderly conduct. Um, and that would be a section that's for both the audience. Um, someone speaking to the board or for the board, myself, Julie, Andy gets kind of really back there sometimes. Um, but just it is the duty of the chairperson to call any person being disorderly. Um, speaking when others are speaking, being disruptive, um, feeling to be polite or any type of rude behavior or speaking longer than the five minutes per se. Um, or speaking vulgarities. It is the right of the chairperson to make those things stop. Needless to say, obviously, that is what the gavel is for. But there is also a section in here that allows for you to call. To clear the floor. And that would allow for everything to basically stop at that point. Um, and then you can call for a recess to calm things down. So that would be something that I think I and maybe some of the others would, would say that we should be doing more often. I don't know a nice way to say this, but I've been a part of other boards aside from the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners. Since I was eighteen years old and I'm old. And this is probably the least transparent I have seen a board operate since January first of this year. And I believe that all five of the commissioners sitting at this board ran and speak quite clearly about transparency in government. So I don't want to see this continue anymore. We can bring a specialist in for a work session devoted completely to Robert's Rules of Orders. If you think that would be something that can help. I have already spoken to M S U E about a low-cost Robert's Rules of Orders procedure training for the board that we could possibly do. Um, so that is the last portion that I wanted to leave you with. We have a, um, we have a great, great board. We have some very, five very intelligent, passionate individuals that should be able to drive Ross common county to a better place economically and socially. I just don't want to see us get bogged down in arguing amongst each other to where that's not happening. I'm done.
Thank you, Jody. Rex, do you have anything?
Yes, yeah, we should, a couple of things Jody touched on. I think are very important. First of all, I appreciate her comment in regard to items if we're supposed to start a meeting at ten o'clock. We're running a little over. That's unacceptable. But to the general public, if I was the public person and I expected something to go on at ten o'clock. Expect the meeting to transpire at ten o'clock. It's not fair for the public to sit around and wait for us to get done with our business. So we should always be cognizant of the time. And, and, and first, what she said, we should never shout down or attempt to intimidate the public. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There was one other item I was going to cover and I apologize. On the work session, if we discuss something this week on our work session. And it's on for a motion for two weeks, it will not be on the work session in two weeks prior to that motion. We've never done it like that.
Well, that would be correct, but I think if there's any questions or.
We could do that under discussion for that motion.
You could, you could, yes.
Yep, because someone makes a motion, someone seconds it and then there's always discussion. So that's time to bring it up.
But if somebody had questions when you had that presentation.
Oh, sure.
Information. So then that would be, I guess, where you could decide, do we want to put it on briefly? Have additional brief conversation before we get to that point. But you also can have that discussion. Because if you have that additional discussion in the work session, it may turn out that you decide, you know what, we're not ready to vote on this motion yet.
Yeah, but on a general, there's always discussion when someone makes the motion.
You have traditionally, since I've been here, and I'm assuming Mr. Milburn, who's been here a lot longer than the rest of us, may confirm this. Traditionally, it then gets pushed into unfinished new business prior to a motion. So then same purpose. Um, that way the work session can still move forward with new information without telling the commissioner or an administrator, somebody. Um, department head or another, other elected official, oh, sorry, you've got to wait two more weeks for that.
Exactly.
On the work session, which.
Just clean that up a little bit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make a comment, respect to Mr. Ostrigan's comment in regards to the special meeting. I did not personally know he was out of town. The chairman called this meeting. Actually, I thought Darlene was still out of town. Commissioner Censor was out of town. I didn't realize it was Commissioner Ostrigan was out of town. So when I first heard about this. I thought everybody was in town. If you might be back. So that was, uh, I think it's fair for Mr. Ostrigan to, to make his comment. So I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Any of the board members have any comments? A public comment?
Yes, I have public comments. Can I go ahead?
Yeah.
All right, great. Um, I, I've been making a lot of notes here and it, it sounds to me like, uh, it's being more of an inconvenience item to allow more things to be brought up in our meetings. Uh, but that's not the case. Uh, I haven't seen our work sessions running over two hours. I haven't seen them running over an hour. In fact, when I used to attend the meetings of the previous board, lots of times meetings ran over an hour or work sessions ran over an hour. Uh, and just because they're brought up, and just because it hasn't been done that way before, which it has. Even if it hadn't been done that way before, doesn't mean it, that it's bad or necessarily shouldn't be done. Uh, you know, ahead of time. And, and this seems to be a meeting to complain about me, okay? I, I really feel the chair should have asked everyone ahead of time, rather than just setting up a meeting if they could attend, especially since a lot of it seems to be directed toward me. Uh, I want to talk about the stupid comment. You know, it's kind of funny, last week on March the sixteenth, Chuck Schumer headlines. Chuck Schumer calls Republicans stupid for blocking a suspension of the debt ceilings and tells them to get out of the way. And here's what the article says. Senate Majority Leader Chuck Schumer took to the Senate floor Wednesday to accuse Republicans of pure stupidity for failing to allow Democrats to move legislation to hike the debt ceiling to prevent a default. Schumer spoke a day after his counterpart Mitch McConnell objected when he saw unanimous consent. And the article goes on and on. So the stupid comment. I, I agree. Maybe I should use something more intellectually sound like, you know, mentally challenged or something like that. I don't know. Uh, anyway, uh, I have emailed and brought up several things prior to the agenda being scheduled to, uh, our chair in the past. And he has always told me that that's going to be brought up as old or new business. That's why I have asked in the work session if, and everybody will probably remember, they say. I, I've said, hey, I want to make sure we cover this, this, this and this. It isn't that I brought them up then. I brought them up prior, but the chair has not allowed them to be brought. Is that correct, Dave? Have you said that?
Yeah, that's right. I told you to bring it up under new and old business because that was the place for that material.
That, that's, that's correct. But now everybody's saying, what everybody's saying is that needs to be made a line item. Okay, an agenda item. And that's where I would like it to be. And, uh, uh, anyway. No, i- if it's, if it's an agenda item. And that's what we're going to, I, I, I have brought that up the week before. And I'm, and I'm always puzzled by that, but it's not an issue with me and I don't have a problem with it. I'll get those items in and I want them put on the agenda then. And I, I, I heard a lot of things from Michelle that I like. It seems to me that a lot of comments were made in the last meeting that were very disparaging towards me. And I think we do need to get a, a handle on, on what people do say. Uh, and the rules do say different things about bringing, things being brought up that aren't on the agenda. As long as we make them part of, uh, before, on or before the agenda is brought up. It's nice to have, be convenient. Uh, it's, it's not the way other counties do business. They, they, they do it the same way under Robert's rules. You can bring things up to be put on the agenda up until the time the agenda is approved. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. The purpose of this board is to do the county business, not to make it easy on the board members. Motions don't have to be in writing. They can be brought up at any time and voted on according to Michigan Counties Association, Robert's rules. Yeah, I can bring up a motion next week and say, I motion, I moved to do this. And everybody can vote on it. That's the way it's always been. And that's the way it should be. Uh, seems to me.
I'm going to cut you off because that is not the fact.
That's why you're cutting me off, Dave. You don't like what I'm saying. Fine. That's another reason I wasn't allowed to be at this meeting.
I don't even go there. You knew about the meeting on Thursday. Is there any other public comment? Yes, sir. Please come up here, turn your mic on, state your name.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Timo Rourke. I guess I have a couple of quick comments. The transparency issue, I think I brought this up at a previous meeting. It's almost a ha ambush kind of. It's almost a, a ha ambush kind of situation that you have going on, I served with a board that did that for a long time before we got resolution to that. Where a board member realized. There's a procedure to get on the agenda, there's a procedure to bring up issues. It's respectful to the other members of the board and to the staff. When you walk into a meeting and you bring up an item that no one is prepared to discuss. And you have information, but other members don't have information. And then you expect the board to act on that immediately and you get. When it doesn't happen, when it doesn't turn out to be a, a motion or a resolution and a vote at that meeting. Um, that's out of touch with the reality of what needs to happen for a board. Each member has the right to bring up issues, there's no doubt about that. There's a procedure for this board and a set of rules for this board as to how that happens and the timeliness of how that happens. And if you wanna present a motion or a resolution for the rest of the board to consider. I think it's your responsibility to draft that resolution or motion. And make sure that it's in the hands of the other board members in a timely fashion, so that it can either be discussed in a work session. Or during the regular board meeting, under the rules of the board. Um, I think that. Familiarity with the rules that this board operates under is very important. Um, certainly the chair has some responsibilities at those meetings. Uh, both to how the board acts, but also how the public interacts with the board. You know, I have a flavor for profanity. You know, I've expressed that in the past. If you bang that gavel and tell me not to do that, I will stop doing it. Passionate about what I say and when I come up and speak. And sometimes those things slip into my vocabulary again, and it's no disrespect to the board. Um, it's just the way I talk a lot of times, and if you say, stop that, I will, I'll respect your authority when you bang the gavel. And say, Tim, you're out of line, and you should do that. You should also do that when there's a discourse between people in the, on the board and people in public. Uh, if I stand up at the back of the room and I shout at one of your members, anything, if I shout at the board and I'm out of line. Bang the gavel, tell them to sit down, they're out of order, it's pretty simple. It's a new thing, you know, Dave, I've known you for a very long time. You've got the gavel.
Yep.
Just against me or anybody else, and when people get up and they get out of order, you bang the gavel, you have, under your rules, I think you have the ability to stop the meeting. Escort people out, restart later, you know, and explain the rules to people that wanna come back in and, and, and act accordingly. But I've worked with boards that. Had those aha moments, where they walked into board and said, I have this, look at this. Uh, and then surprised the rest of the board with some document and then said, now we need to talk about this right now. Uh, it's almost impossible for the rest of the board to serve. It brings animosity between board members, it certainly surprises me as a member of the public. Uh, I look up to see what your agenda is, I go down through the items that you're gonna work on and you're gonna discuss. I wanna see who has been invited to and approved to come in during your work sessions, make presentations, because I may. Want to come in and agree with them or disagree with them. But I wanna see the presentation, so I show up, I zoom in, I come to the meetings, but I wanna participate as a member of the public. That can't happen if it's, it's brought up at that particular time. And new and old business, you can have a list of that. You can have a list of the items under new and old business, unfinished business for you. And you can certainly do that, there are training sessions available, I'm sure Mac has one for your group. Uh, the township I know had people that would come in and, and give presentations to the township boards, road commission boards. Every association has somebody that's. Up to date on Robert's Rules of Orders and how to conduct meetings and they can look at your rules of order. And decorum about how things are supposed to happen, I'm like some of the statements that earlier. I think the business of the county is why you're here, and when you get diverted off into the weeds on other topics. That's when the wheels come off, and it feels to the public like maybe you're not doing the business of the county. So.
A redo of our five minutes, Michelle. Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Any other public comment out there, Michelle?
Sorry, I'll be really brief, um, two things, yes, I will. And I won't even probably take a minute, but two things, one thing I do want to remind the commissioners and also something that we need to do regarding. Meeting conduct is the people out in Zoom land, if your, if your microphone's there and you're sitting way back here. And you're not speaking very loud, they can't hear you clearly, if somebody is sitting back in the audience and they're commenting. They can't hear, because I've had where, when I was gone on vacation or even just watching last week's meeting. There was things, questions being asked, like when somebody asked Julie a question, Julie doesn't have a microphone, so unless Julie. You're making her wanna come up here to the microphone, the public isn't hearing that, so we need to make sure that we're mindful of that. We're turning our mic on, make sure we're speaking clearly, because also not only that, we're speaking into the microphone. There's people in our audience that maybe can't hear very well, sometimes I have a hard time hearing. And I'm just like, what did they say, I don't know.
Our lovely I T department did move speakers to the back, so hopefully the hearing in the back has improved.
Okay, great, um, the only other thing that I had to say, I went over a minute, sorry. Is that this lovely guide to Michigan County government provided by M S U E. In here, it's got that sample of board rules that we went through and it, it, it states in here, I came across it this morning as a reminder. Is that Robert's Rules of Order is great for larger groups. It's great for people who have absolutely no idea what they're doing and they have no rules established. Smaller county government, Robert's Rules of Order doesn't necessarily. Work for you, that's why you have your board rules, you've adopted your board rules for what. Ideally, you see would work best for your group and how you want to conduct yourselves. So, and Robert's Rules is back there for anything that's not covered in your rules. So, we just kinda need to, I think, keep that in mind, because there was a lot of reference to Robert's Rules of Orders. And, oh, yes, that's there, if you have rules for addressing something in your board rules that you've adopted, that's your rules. That is all, thank you very much.
Thank you, is there anybody else in Zoom land? Krista, do you have any comments? I'll take a motion for a German, please. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.